Now up and running, so I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification and adopt the agenda. If you'd all stand, we'll make the pledge of flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Move on to a presentation explanation of the budget. Mike Williamson will provide an overview of our local budget.
All right, thank you. Thanks everyone for coming. Unlike the students who just presented where they have a problem with getting them out of there on time, I think after this 20 minutes you'll be running out the door, but we'll see how that goes. I don't know if I'm as exciting as Makerspace. But every year we are required to present the budget and electors at the annual meeting are invited to give input on the budget and then also a vote on the tax levy as well. And really, the purpose here of this budget, the purpose of any budget really is a couple things. One, all those great pictures that you see up there, it's sometimes tough to remember that the numbers and things represent real output, that they represent our students and the results that are out in the community. And so while we're talking mill rate and state aid and expenditures and revenues, really behind those numbers are a lot of great things happening, okay? And so that's always the purpose of the budget. And really, this budget process starts almost nine months ago. It starts in the December of the previous year. And at that point in time, we're giving DPI our budget for 1617 at that point, and as soon as DPI gets that, we can already start estimating what 1718 is going to look like from a revenue standpoint. So this work starts really in earnest, almost a year in advance. And then as you see up on the budget calendar, we do different things throughout these months to kind of prepare and fine tune the budget. Until right now, we're at the budget hearing, of course, and you'll hear some details. You also have a budget hearing packet, if you grab that on the way in, really fascinating reading. And in October then, we'll finalize some variables and at the end of October, the board will actually take with the new variables and formalize what the tax levy will be for the 1718 school year. So really, the question is, if we've got all those pictures and we've got all those great things that are happening, what are all those numbers, right? Those six or seven pages of numbers in your budget hearing packet? What are those really reflecting? And really, there's a couple of things budgetarily that can really stand out. One is in 1718, we've added a couple of new social workers. There's a huge shortage in the, really statewide across many districts with social workers. And if you were paying attention to the governor's budget, he's put some dollars in the new biennium budget to get districts reimbursed for social workers come 1819. And we felt it very appropriate to kind of get that work started now and kind of get our students, the needs that they, get our students' needs met. We've added an additional teacher and some aides for a new special ed alternative program that we're partnering with some of our area school districts, and I believe our board president will have some more on that. We're continuing to use the energy efficiency exemption for maintenance work at the high school, so that not only are we doing some deferred maintenance, but we're also doing that in an energy efficient manner. And so we're going to continue to do that in 1718 as well, to a lesser degree than we did in 1617, but still there. And if you're looking through the different funds, you're also going to notice that our debt payments have kicked up a little bit this year. We've got a four-year bond that's kicked in for a huge fiber optic project that was done in coordination with the city in 1617, and those payments are kicking in. So really, when you look at the numbers, really, there's a story behind a lot of those pieces, and these are just some of those things that we kind of wanted to reflect on. Now for the really fun part, which is charts and graphs. The majority of our revenue comes really from what we call the revenue limit formula. And really, the revenue limit formula is simply this, it's our property taxes plus our state aid. And unfortunately, in Whitnall's case, and it's not just Whitnall, there's many districts throughout the state, the majority of our revenue limit comes from property taxes and not state aid. And so we're about 70/30 property taxes versus state aid. But this revenue limit formula is a really important formula to keep in mind. It's a little over 80% of our overall revenues. So that this revenue limit formula that we get, it's really just one sheet in an Excel thing. It's 80% of our revenues right then and there between property taxes and the state aid that we receive. So this is a slide that you can take home and study tonight for the quiz that'll be online tomorrow. But really, all our revenue limit formula is, is our student membership multiplied out by a per pupil amount that we get within this revenue limit formula. It's dictated to us by the state. And so multiplying our three-year student membership average, which right now, we're still guessing, we had our third Friday count on September 15th, and that should actually be finalized sometime this week, but we're guessing it's going to come in around 2090 this year, and giving us a three-year average of 2094. So our revenue limit formula is simply that 2094 multiplied out by our per pupil amount, which is $10,620. We add in our energy exemption, we add in some extra dollars for the private school vouchers, we don't add that in, that's given to us by the state. And you add up all those numbers, and this year's revenue limit formula will be about $22,877. Seven, $77. Hey Scott, it's $877,004, okay? So really, that is 80% of our overall revenue for the year. So when we look then at our revenues in combination of everything, really, you can see how much our property taxes really drive a huge portion of our revenues for the year. Pretty much 60% of total revenues are just wrapped up in the property taxes. Our state aid number coming in next. Our third biggest source of revenue, which is fairly significant, and people do ask about it every now and then, is the open enrollment in piece, the revenues that we get for students outside the district who want to be at Whitnall. And that's a $3.3 million revenue for the district. And that's just important to keep in mind. We're not at the expenditure part yet, but expenditure wise, we're somewhere around $600,000 for students that go out. So when you're talking about bringing in about 3.3 million and only 600,000 going out, it's a pretty big revenue source for Whitnall to be able to do some things in this district. The categorical aid piece, just for your own reference and again for the quiz, is really the state, the aid that we get from the governor in the biennium budget. If you ever heard the term this past spring, $200 per pupil, this is that line item right there, which is almost a million dollars for Whitnall. And then we break down the other sources as well. But we are budgeting total revenues to be about $27.88 million for 1718 out of the general fund. On the expenditure side for 1718, there's a really important concept that I think we need to understand as far as where Whitnall's place is in the state of Wisconsin as far as districts go. First of all, we're what's called a negatively aided district, which this is definitely a bonus question on the quiz. It's a, take it easy. It is, for every dollar that Whitnall spends, above the per pupil amount of $9,539 on average, we receive 35 cents less in state aid. So as soon as we start going per pupil, our expenditure's going 9,540, 9,541, we start to lose state aid. It's just where we are in the formula across the state. Now, what I have up there, just as a point, the state average for expenditures for 1516, we don't have 1617's numbers yet, those were just submitted to the state on the 22nd or 21st. For 1516, though, the average across the state is $12,887 of expenditures. Whitnall was at about 11,800, 11,786 to be exact. So we're the 124th lowest bottom fourth as far as expenditures per pupil spending. There are zero districts across the state who spend less than that $9,539. In other words, it's nearly impossible to spend below that amount, in case you're wondering, well, just don't go above that amount and there'll be no negative aid taken from you. But in this instance, no districts are below that number. The lowest is at 9,800, and just for fund, the highest in the state is around $25,000 per pupil expenditures. And that's not counting food service or the common, or fund 80, I should say, the community's fund. And really, that's just to kind of showcase again, kind of the level of expenditures that we're at and that really, we are keeping expenditures relatively low compared to the rest of the state. And we're going to continue to be negatively aided as long as our property value per member is below that magic number of this year being 558, 546. Currently, we're at almost $750,000 of property value. So really, and as business managers like to do, in graphical form, if that blue line would have to drop below that green line for us to ever be positively aided above And as you can see, since 1990, so we're talking, you know, 18 years, historically, we've never been positively aided, and that's just where Whitnall is in the formula. Okay, we are positively or negatively aided. Not all districts are, some districts, you can flip it, the green is above the blue. Milwaukee, for example, would be a positively aided district. The more they spend, the more aid they receive. And that's just, again, kind of something to keep in mind as we talk about the state aid formula and property taxes and pieces like that, because the more state aid we get, obviously, the lower our property taxes go. But we're kind of fighting against the formula here. So just to kind of just break down our expenditures for 1718, or at least what's budgeted, this isn't a surprise to any district across the state. You're going to have about half your expenditures be wrapped up in salaries. Education is a service industry, and we need to serve kids, and that's just where a majority of our services come from, is our staff. And then the benefits that are wrapped up in that, so all in all, a little bit over 60% of our budget goes towards salaries and benefits. And then you can kind of just see where the rest of our expenditures fall, services being next, you're talking about buildings and grounds and technology being heavily service-based, and when you're talking about four buildings to maintain as far as energy and electricity and all those pieces, repairs that are done across the district, services are going to be a huge part of that budget line item. But you'll notice, if you're taking studious notes, I'm sure you are, the total expenditures are matching the total revenues in this proposed budget. And that's really just a common practice to make sure that we are obviously being good stewards, but also matching our expenditures to the revenues to this point. Just some more fun graphs for you. This is kind of just a graphical look at our revenue limit composition. Again, that revenue limit driving 80% of our revenues. That green is going to be how much of our revenue limit is really state aid. And the blue then is the property taxes. On top of that is the energy exemption, as well as Fund 38, which is our debt payments, and Fund 41, which is our capital expansion fund. Tonight, within the revenue limit formula, we're going to be voting on putting some dollars into Fund 41. This doesn't affect the mill rate or taxes at all, it's all, again, underneath the revenue limit formula. It's going to be the first time in six years that we're going to put some dollars back into Fund 41. But it does require a second vote on top of Fund 10 and Fund 38 within the revenue limit formula. So you can kind of just see where that revenue limit has been and really where we're looking for the 1718 school year, a little less than we were in 1617. And the majority of that is due to that orange there, the energy exemption formula. One of my favorite graphs, I'm not sure why, I just like it, is just a combination of our mill rate and kind of where it's been over the course of the last five years, where we're looking for it to be here in 1718, and property valuation. Property valuation really drives a majority of the mill rate. And so you can kind of see, obviously, looking at the graph, for a couple of years, we've had some fairly significant increases in property valuation, a little over 1.8 and almost 1.5% the last two years respectively. This year, we're only projecting what we initially thought would be a 1.5% increase again across the state. The average was 4%. We're projecting, however, due to some preliminary numbers, only a .48% increase in property valuation. And so 11 cents of the current mill rate increase is simply due to that property valuation not going up as much as we thought it would. And so that's a significant piece to understand. But you can see from 1314 to the 1718 projected mill rate of 1014, really no change, and then some moderation in between there. I might have just liked the colors on this graph to show it to you again, I'm not sure. But again, just to look at the all-important mill rate to see where we're looking at for 1718. Finally, or close to finally, you probably got excited there, close to finally, property tax impact tables. This is just an idea that if a property is worth $115,000 in 1314, and taking into consideration the property valuation increases over the last four years, how much that property would be worth today in 1718, and then noticing the tax impacts each of those years due to what the mill rate was, as well as what your property would be worth. An important point to realize that over the last five years, what we're projecting is that on a $150,000 home, or for every $150,000 of property value, taxes are going to go up or have gone up, or are projected to go up for 1718, just about $64, $63.99. That's over the course of five years. And so you're talking about $12 on average per year for a $150,000 home. The important piece here, I think, to realize is that even if the mill rate had stayed stable at $10.13 as it was in 1314, if it had been $10.13 each of those five years, $62 of that $64 in essence would have been strictly due to you having more value in your home and thus paying greater taxes, right? If your property, in other words, if your property had stayed at $150,000 in 1314, if it was still worth $150,000 today, your taxes would have only gone up a little over a dollar over the course of five years. But you want your property to go up in value, and when it does go up in value, that mill rate gets put onto your assessed value, and that drives up property taxes. So not good for people who want to stay in their homes and be in it, because your property taxes are going up, but for those who want to sell, sell in as far as an asset goes, it's good that your property value is going up. So there's two different ways to kind of look at that, but over the course of these five years, property values have gone up about 5%, well, about 4%. And again, kind of a smaller drop in 1718, at least that's what's being projected right So tonight, really, what you're voting on is, as far as the financial pieces go, there's about four or five total resolutions at our annual meeting. Really, the financial pieces here that we're looking at, and then we'll bring these forward and kind of bring the variables in in October and certify this in October. But tonight, what we're voting on is a levy out of Fund 10 of 6.1 million, as well as a Fund 38 levy of $173,000. Again, that just goes towards paying back some debt, all within the confines of the revenue limit formula. And Fund 41, which has to be its own separate resolution. For those who don't know, I might have skimmed past this. Fund 41, it's also in your handy-dandy budget booklet as well. Fund 41 is money that's set aside only for capital expansion projects, site improvements. So it's a way to kind of show the community that, yes, we are setting dollars aside for capital improvements across the district. And then there's some value in doing that from the district's side. There's some incentives there to put dollars aside in Fund 41 to show our community that we're being fiscally responsible in that instance, and not everything's just going into the quote-unquote "general fund." But the total levy for this evening is 16.393 million. And again, as those variables come in October, that can be adjusted at the October 23rd board meeting. I would love questions if you have them. I talked really fast, and maybe you'll...
Before we start that, just a reminder that if you're going to speak, just make sure you list your name and address and that you've registered in the back on the sign-in log.
Lots of rules to ask a question, that's okay. Usually, when I was a teacher, if there were no questions, it's usually meant because I talked too fast and just went, and we brought up some concepts that we weren't all grasping. But I think the important thing to really take away from the hearing is, you know, those dollars are going towards great things here in the Whitnall community. You know, the mill rate impact over the course of, spread out over five years, has been relatively minimal. And that's a good thing, to accomplish what Whitnall is accomplishing with minimal tax impact over a five-year span is a pretty great thing. And to be a new business manager, to come into that and to be able to tell that story is great for me. So, yes.
Good.
Hold on one second. Could you just come up here so we can get it recorded? Please.
Eileen, yeah, Eileen Velitis, 9160, Wildfowl Court. So, in this packet that I handed out.
Yeah.
Okay, page 16.
Okay.
He's got to get one. Okay, so if you look midway down when you have revenue and financing sources?
Yep.
And the subtotal for the budget 1718, it's $16,574,479. Shouldn't it, why is the amount being levied different?
So the amount that we're levying for is really that line 210, taxes. That's what we levy for.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yep, and then Fund 38 is a completely different fund that's going to be on...
So then you have to add that to, okay, I got you.
So local sources there is a lot more than just property taxes, it's things like money that we bring in for gate receipts at games, it's student fees.
Right, I was looking at that, the wrong number.
Yep, okay, okay, yep.
Why is that different? So the amount we're actually levying for is...
Is that, is...
But then you have to look, you have to add 38, Fund 38.
Yes.
You have to add Fund 41.
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
Yep, okay, thanks, Eileen.
Any other questions or comments?
From the board?
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now I'll take a motion to adjourn to the budget hearing, and then we'll, I'm sorry, adjourn the budget hearing and then reconvene for the annual meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or motion carry? So I'd like to call the annual meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law, and adopt the agenda. Okay. Do you want him here or... Okay. Okay.
To nominate Rob Petrie.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Are there any other nominations?
Aye.
All right. Any other? I'm sorry?
Do you have to ask for any other nominations or not?
We can't, are there any other nominations?
Not for me, I just thought that was something that we had to do, was ask for any other nomination.
Okay, so then...
Aye.
There you go. Okay, so motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Rob? Thank you.
Rob, can you just check to make sure that microphone is on there, the green light on?
Yep, yep, it's on. All right, thank you. All right, could I have a motion to appoint a person to record the minutes for the annual meeting?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Poss to record the minutes.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, motion passes. Now we'll move on to the adoption of the 2016 annual board meeting minutes. I would like to see if there is a motion to accept, actually, sorry, one comment, the copy is in the booklet on pages two through five. So now I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the minutes for the 2016 annual meeting and the 2016 budget hearing. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion moves forward.
This is, the public can vote on this.
I just wanted to say that, yeah. Just remember, any president should be making motions and voting also.
This is the only, I need, we need to point out, because it's the only time of the year where when we ask for motions and seconds and then votes, that it's more than just seven of us.
All right.
Thank you, Rob.
All right, and now I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Okay, treasurer's report, okay. Good evening, thank you for attending. The unaudited financials for the 2016-17 school year can be found in the budget hearing packet on pages 16 through 22. Upon completion of the audit, the audited financials will be available upon request, just contact the district office typically, the audit and gets wrapped up, November is typically when they become available for the district office, so feel free to ask for that if you're interested. And then information regarding the tax levy mill rate for the 2017-18 school year, as Mike had just gone over a few minutes ago during the budget hearing, can be found in the budget hearing booklet again on page 10 through 14.
All right, thank you.
And now we'll do the president's report.
Okay, my name's Jonathan Kegel, and I'm honored to serve as a president of the Whitnall Board of Education. This is my first annual meeting, so here we go. 2016-17 school year was obviously a transitional year for all of Whitnall. Dr. Olson, it was her first year as our superintendent. This is Mike Williamson's first annual meeting and budget hearing, and I think he did a great job, but he started the middle of last year, so this is his first full year coming in 2017-18. We've added new communications and human resource managers, we've completed the fiber optics installation and then the full crossover. High school science teacher, one state honor. We selected Bray as our architect for the facility, starting in future planning. Utilized energy efficiency funding twice to complete almost 2 million in energy-related maintenance projects. Numerous community events and conversations, including Most Likely to Succeed, the Gifted and Talented Conversation, personalizing learning, and Hopes of a Whitnall Graduate. Mike held School Finance 101 and 102, which included live streaming, which was a first for Whitnall. And those are actually available on the Whitnall website, so if you have any questions or want to get a rehash, you can go back through there. Creation implementation of a new compensation model, which was obviously in the works for years. And as I mentioned before, micro credentialing for educators. And Dr. Olson went over 2016-17 goals, the summation in the September 11th meeting. Those are available on the Whitnall district site, so by all means, go ahead and check that out if you have any questions about where we are. So 2017 will include the facility's community survey determining the additional and appropriate funding options and solutions. We have a new director of people services, Jackie Winter, and a new curriculum director, Lynn Leroy. New principals at the middle school, Laura Gennaro, and who succeeded Mrs. Winter, and then, I'm sorry, Mrs. Leroy, Miss Leroy, I'm sorry. And then Charlie Tolleson at the high school, who succeeded Mrs. Winter. We restructured the dean of students position into a middle school assistant principal position. We added two new social worker positions while developing a mental health and socially-emotional learning curriculum model. Introduction of a new schedule and more course offerings at the middle school as part of our district's personalizing learning plan. Focus on career and technical skills, which includes a makerspace class at the middle school, which obviously, we saw tonight with the new name packs we have. Seminar courses at the high school as part of the district's personalizing learning plan. Alternative special education program for grades seven through 12 in collaboration with local districts to keep our students in the Whitnall community. Again, these are students that we would take to an offside venue, they would be educated there and ultimately brought back in. Now we're housing that here, and other districts in the area are utilizing that services too, so we get to keep those students in-house. Continued expansion of the personalizing learning plan to include kindergarten through fifth grade in both elementary schools. Continued focus on academic and career planning, which included obviously adding the career and technical education coordinator, and then the makerspace classes again. Creating a dashboard of what our community believes will make Whitnall graduates ready for their life after high school, whether that be secondary education or employment as part of the redefining ready process. That builds off of the community events we had last... that builds off of the community events we had last year with the Gifted and Talented personalized learning and, and Hopes of a Whitnall graduate. Uh, technological advances including an online school registration process, uh, community, excuse me, communication enhancements that include building a new district website, uh, to connect the Whitnall window and a more robust social media pre- presence, excuse me. An extreme makeover of Flash, which happened last week, our Matt Scott, which included an entertaining social media campaign, visits to local businesses, excitement during the homecoming game halftime reveal, and, uh, ultimately a new face for Whitnall. And then, um, also during the September 11th meeting, Dr. Olson unveiled the 2017-18 district goals. Uh, those are available on the website too. So, all in all, 2016-17 was a fantastic year. A lot of transition, a lot of change, but it really set us up to build and grow this year, which you can see with our facility studies and the planning and the upcoming surveys. So, look out for that in the next month. There'll be the survey out for the community about what you see in the district as priorities and needs. Um, and we're excited. I mean, it's a lot so far this year, but I'm personally excited as a parent and a resident, uh, to see what holds for our students in, throughout the year. So, thank you for all your time and support of the district and our students. And if you have any questions or anything, don't hesitate to contact the administration or, or the board members, and we're here to help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time then, I'd like to move on to the annual meeting action items by the electors. Uh, the recommended resolution language is on page six of your booklet, and I'd like to recommend that I will read the motion, uh, read the resolution and ask for a motion. All right? So for Resolution One on the tax levy, um, I would like to have a motion for the following resolution. Be it resolved by the electors of the Whitnall School District pursuant to Section 120 dot 10 subsection eight of the Wisconsin statutes, that the tax levy for the 2017-18 school year shall be set at $16,103,648 for the general fund and $173,292 for the non-referendum debt service fund. May I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Now, the audience is involved in this too, right?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
If they want to be, yeah. I'm just-
Second.
Okay, I have a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the resolution passes it, passes. Uh, the second resolution for the capital expansion tax levy, can I have a motion for the following resolution? Be it resolved by the electors of the Whitnall School District pursuant to Section 120 dot 10 subsection 10M of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of financing, financing remodeling, maintenance, maintenance repair, and improvement projects that a tax in the amount of $117,000 be levied for the 2017-18 school year to be deposited in the capital expansion fund to be used only for the purposes specified above. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the resolution is approved. Resolution Three is the legal resolution. So can I have a motion for the following resolution? Be it resolved by the electors of the Whitnall School District pursuant to Section 120 dot 10 subsection 14 of the Wisconsin statutes, that the school board be and is hereby authorized to provide for the prosecution or defense of any legal action or proceeding in which the district is or may be interested during the 2017-18 school year. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is approved. The fourth resolution is the school board member salaries. The salaries for 2016 and 17 school year were $3,650 for the board president and $3,450 for all other board members. We are, we will now make a motion for the board member salaries for the 2017 and 18 school year. So if I can have a motion for the following resolution, be it resolved by the electors of the Whitnall School District pursuant to Section 120 dot 10 subsection three, that salaries of the school board members for the 2017-18 school year be set as followed, follows. Board president, $3,650. All other members, $3,450. Could I have such a motion? Somebody who's not on the board, maybe? So moved. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, the resolution's approved.
Let me just get your information before you leave. I know you have to do it now before we leave. Thank you very much. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Resolution Five, the date and time for the 2018 Annual Meeting. Can I have a motion for the following resolution? Be it resolved by the electors of the Whitnall School District, that the date and time of the annual meeting for the 2018-19 school year be established by the Whitnall School Board. May I have such a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is approved. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now our, on to our school board meeting. Uh, I'd like to call to order, verify compliance with open meetings law, and then adopt the agenda. Item two is comments from the audience regarding agenda items per policy 0167.3. This is the only time public participation is permitted. Comments are limited to current agenda items. Anyone having a legitimate interest in an agenda item may participate. Attendees must register their intention to speak upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants are to preface their comments by announcing their name and address and group affiliation when appropriate. Comments are limited to three minutes unless extended by the board president, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Comments are to be directed to the board. No person may address or question board members individually. Any person or group wishing to have an item considered for the agenda shall submit their request to the superintendent no later than 14 calendar days prior to the meeting. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll move on to item three, gifts, donations, recognition, student and staff spotlight. Three A is the Whitnall Foundation donation for the Flash mascot makeover.
I have that. I don't think this dongle works with my laptop.
Other side.
No, it's not. Mine's on the side. Yeah, this dongle's not my dongle.
I'm not sure what you just said.
I know. This connector is not the same as mine.
What kind do you need?
Well, he's got one over there. Are you just gonna call it up, or do you want me to put it on my? I may have an HDMI port if you want, unless you just want to give me a different. It's not, it's not good anymore.
That's darn awful product.
Yes.
This just costs, it costs $30.
Want to leave?
Yep. Here we go. So just a quick, um, this is a, a, under a spotlight. Um, you've heard a little bit about it, but if you weren't at the game, I know many of you were at the game or have seen it. Um, and it was a donation from the Whitnall School Foundation, um, to fund that. So I want to be clear on that, as it wasn't, um, budgeted for. So, um, it was a donation request and they purchased the, um, entire costume. So, um, that's what Flash looked like before, in case you can't remember. We looked like a little royal blue. I referred to him as Cooch Monster before, affectionately of course. And so here was a picture of him coming out of the tunnel Friday. Um, if you weren't able to see that from that side of it. Um, so our true navy blue and athletic gold colors and a little bit, you can see his wings a little bit more there. So that's just a recognition, um, in terms of, uh, making that recognition, um, in terms of that donation from the, and just wanted to highlight that tonight. So, um, there will be a newspaper article in the My Community now, so we got interviewed for that and doing some, some press on that. So you'll see an article that'll go out to the community. And we've intentionally not put it on our Facebook page, but will tomorrow. We had lots of people messaging us today about, we weren't able to see it. When will we get to see it? So we'll, we'll do a tada a little bit in a couple of days there too. So I just wanted to share with, share that with the board in case you haven't seen it. So, that's that piece.
Great, thank you. Um, and thank you to the Whitnall School Foundation for the donation. Um, item three B is a Whitnall middle school makerspace, um, as Scott walked out. Um, but, uh, you know, we just want to thank the students. Obviously, they were here earlier, but thank you for the nameplates and the, the stickers. Um, it's exciting that they've, you know, they're just getting their feet wet with all this technology and the learning, and they've been able to create this so far. So, it's exciting. Um, so on to item four, consent agenda. Uh, consent agenda items are approved all at once and are one meeting approval items. Item four A is approval of August 28th, September 11th, and September 18th, 2017 meeting minutes. Item four B is approval of September voucher and vouchers payable. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, a motion to approve items four A and four B?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is action items. Five A is Act 32 Resolution Amendment. Um, any, any questions before we vote? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So on to six, which is reports. Uh, Dr. Olson, your superintendent report.
Yep, so as you see on there, um, I just did one two weeks ago, so I'm not gonna update the district goals from two weeks ago as we, um, get into the cycle of how we're, we're doing that piece of it. Just two updates. Um, the, in terms of facility planning, that is, uh, the survey is going, um, forward to residents the week. We're trying not to say a specific date because we can't control the United States postal service in terms of that. So in terms of the printer and getting it there, we're saying around, uh, October one or two-ish, depending upon how that falls with getting it delivered, because, um, in terms of how postage falls and where we end up on the priority of that. So that's what the community can expect to see that. And the survey should be completed by October 23rd, um, which gives two weeks for the, um, school receptions to sort of get all the data. If there are any manual surveys they need to enter to put into there, get the data out and disaggregate it. Um, right now, um, the plans are around November 6th to have a special meeting just to go through that and to get the board that, um, information as soon as we head prior to the November 6th. But that would be a public meeting in which we would go through the survey results at that time. So that's the plan, um, in terms of a timeline there. In terms of facility planning, um, Mike and I have also asked Bray Architects to provide for us a timeline from now until April 4th. That sort of delineates all of the dates in between there to keep us on track. Um, at our last, um, time we met, there was some discussion about not wanting to go right up to the wire to pass that resolution because we're sort of at a timeline, French by state statute. So there was some discussion about using December as the date to try to time, um, to put a, a benchmark of passing a resolution. And so, uh, with only one meeting in December. So we've sort of provided that to Bray Architects and have them work through a timeline of what that looks like. I think there was also some, um, consideration about if there are going to be any special meetings that they're pre-planned, um, and not at the last minute type of thing. So our, so our public can say that, um, so November 6th would be one, but we've already known that because there was a three-week gap because of five Mondays in October. So that would be one that we could dedicate, and we think that that's gonna be a pretty weighty topic in and of itself. So, to plan that out and have them, and then from that point forward, talk about all of the other stuff that even happens behind the scenes between December and April and that. So we've asked them to, um, provide us that timeline and to be able to share that out. So, um, I know that the board was given that last time, and I know those, those are very helpful in terms of decision-making to know, do we have any wiggle word with this? Can we delay a decision, or really does it have to be made? So we want to have that decision that's, uh, out there. Um, the next topic under strategic visiting, um, relates to our redefining ready. Um, and our plans are as we start our workshop model, the first meeting in October is to bring forward some of that data so the board can start looking at it. In a workshop model, we talked about the, um, college readiness. And so right now, the, the state has not released yet some of those scores, so they're not public consumption yet. But our ACT data, forward exam and all of that, we have individual scores, but, um, state report cards haven't yet come out. So we'll, we'll look at those timings. Um, so if we're not ready with enough academic data to start to have conversations around with, we will start to look at some of that career readiness data that was out there from the research in terms of community service hours, co-curricular participation, some of those working-based experience things, and start having some conversations around that. So, um, on the October, is it ninth meeting, at the workshop part of it, we'll start to, um, have some conversations around that. So administratively, we're gonna start talking about that and then bring it to the board level so we can start to bring all those pieces together in terms of what it is that we want to have from a Whitnall graduate and start to create some, look at the data then to see what our benchmark and starting points are, so.
Great. Thank you. Um, does anyone have any items for future consideration under number seven?
I do. I would like to see us do a workshop for the board to take a look at our operating procedures. We've been doing a lot of changes. Maybe you could call it, um, board to define more clearly board norms or court conduct around that kind of.
Yeah, we'll be having that on October 16th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, some more information to come, but that'll be October 16th.
October, what date?
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Monday. Any other items? Okay, so then on to board member announcements.
A very large thank you to the Greenfield Fire Department for rescuing the homecoming dance in that final hour. That was very nice of them to come out and give our support to the dance, and the kids didn't have to come home early on homecoming.
Channel 12 and 58, that is, they made the news. So we'll be on the news next.
And what happened? Channel four also.
So I'd sent it in email, so, yeah, so they were here, um, so power went out in Greenfield to about 1,500 Todd residents. So We Energies notified us, so right in the middle of the homecoming dance. And so we happened to be the high school recipient of the power going out. So, um, they came with some backup generators to keep the DJ going. And, uh, Charlie and Pat were here, kept me informed. So we were, but pretty smooth considering what could have happened.
John Johnson's here as well, helping with the-
Yep.
I, I would like to, Stephanie kinda stole my thunder on that. Yeah, I came out, was one of the last folks out of the building after we did some cleanup, and the, there were four, uh, members of the fire department right there, and I, and I thanked them for what they did. But, yeah, they, I mean, I don't think that's on their list of to-do stuff. So it was very nice of them to do that. It was right about in the midpoint of the, the thing. But the first thing that happened after the power went out is that Charlie Tolson went around and got some, some computer backup batteries, and he got things going back in the gym pretty quickly. So that was pretty, pretty quick thinking there. Nice job on it.
Any other announcements? Any other announcements?
Thursday, football game against Greenfield there.
Televised.
Televised, too.
That's a home game, too.
It's a home game.
Hmm. Yeah, piggybacking off the homecoming, thank you for all the events last week. Um, the kids had a blast. I know it was a lot of fun. Obviously, the game was exciting, both was, everything going on around it and the game itself too. I'm sure, um, Coach Quinlan is getting bored with blowout shutouts, but, uh-
I'm sure.
But, yeah, thank you for all the teachers who stayed after. Parade was a huge hit. Um, it was, it was a great time, so, thank you.
Despite, despite of the weather, that was, that was some warm, humid stuff, and everybody at home pretty tight. So that was good.
Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all, and have a great night.